Good evening. We'd like to call this October 20th, 2020 Board Session to order. Everybody, please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And with that, I would like to open the meeting with, if somebody would like to make a motion for the suggested motions and resolutions from our last board session.
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Stark, seconded by Adam. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And next, we will move on to spotlight on recognition. Dr. Heil?
Thank you. Good evening Chair Perito and School Board members. It's with pleasure that I introduce Employee of the Month is Linda Snyder, who is our district nurse. And this accolade was written by Laura Seifert-Herling. So our September Employee of the Month could not be more deserving. When I began my work in Fridley District, I was amazed by her involvement in meetings and in details she knew about the students that she supported. The words I think of when I think of Linda are hardworking, problem solver, multi-talented, and a superhero. She has an additional responsibility added this year. She is our COVID coordinator. She is the best person for this because from what we have already heard from staff members, it is she brings a sense of calm to everyone around her, and we feel safe knowing that she is in this position. A staff member wrote, "Linda has been a constant support for the childcare department since March 15th. With no questions asked, she showed up, her and her team partnered with us through the shutdown, and she and I continue to stay in touch through the summer months to stay up to date as guidance changed and to talk through decisionatory scenarios that arose. We would not be where we are currently at during this time without the support of the one and only Linda. She is truly wonderful." So I just want to, we, everyone in this audience can say thank you to Linda Snyder for being our COVID-19 coordinator. Thank you.
Thank you, Linda. Next, we'd like to move on to the superintendent and staff reports, starting with the audit presentation, bond, sales, and refunding. Barbie Rossler?
Thank you Board Chair Perito, Board members, and Superintendent Heil. I'm here tonight to introduce Matt Meyer, who is our certified public accountant from Bergen KDB to give the audit report for the 1920 fiscal year for Fridley Public Schools.
Thank you Barbie. Madam Chair, members of the board, thank you for the opportunity to present tonight. We had a good discussion, just so the public knows, a very in-depth presentation at your work session earlier tonight, and I'm going to summarize the highlights of that for you in the public setting this evening. The district has a responsibility each year to provide financial statements for the public to review, and our job as your auditors is to test, examine, and give an opinion on those so that users can be assured of their accuracy. We do that through an independent auditor's report in front of the financial statements, and this year, as in years past, we're happy to provide an unmodified or clean opinion, which is the best we can provide, and that means that the numbers that we'll be reviewing do represent the results of operations and your financial position at the end of the last school year. We also provide a couple other reports. We look at your internal control. We also test you on compliance with federal programs, and we also look at your compliance with Minnesota statutes as it relates to running a school district, and had no issues related to compliance, and one finding related to a lack of segregation of accounting duties, a fairly common finding in a small office environment. We do feel, though, that the district has reviewed from a cost-benefit analysis the situation and believe that they are, have made the right decision related to that. So we'll remind you of that situation each year, that it's not ideal, but we don't have it at a severe finding, just more of a reminder of the situation, just so you can make that cost-benefit on an annual basis and review that annually with your team. To take a look at the results for the year, we need to do it in the context of the budget. As board members, you approve a budget that basically directs how the district is to be run by administration during the year. The budget for the 2019-2020 school year was balanced, called for $44 million of revenue and $44 million of spending. The revenue projections were very good, pretty much right on at 44 million is what you actually received, and you actually spent about $2 million less than what you as a board had authorized. Obviously, a very unusual year with the COVID situation, at-home schooling for the better part of the last half of the year, and there ultimately was actually some savings related to that. Some folks, it might have been on an hourly or on-call basis, ultimately weren't getting their hours in, and then there was also some savings in other areas as you made some staff adjustments during the year. So $42 million rather than the $44 million that you authorized. As a result, that surplus or that overage goes to your fund balance, and you improved your financial health this year by $1.5 million overall. That fund balance to end the year ended up being about $7.4 million, excuse me, on a $44 million budget, and that's right in line with your fund balance policy of having between 6% and 10% within, in reserve for the future. And that reserve is important because we don't know exactly what's going to happen with school funding nor school financing in the year ahead. The funding is locked in for this school year, based on the legislature approving that on every biennium, but this January, when the legislature meets, they will determine the school's fate as far as funding, and also, more importantly, probably this next year, on how they pay you from a cash flow standpoint. Right now, you're paid about 90% on the dollar during the school year. The other 10% comes as a true-up after the end of the year. I would anticipate that that holdback will increase. That's going to put cash flow pressure on the district, so having a couple of years like this, the green bar showing your fund balance back-to-back, building those financial reserves at Rainy Day Fund has certainly been a positive for the district. It's going to help you weather a possible storm in the years ahead here. Two other funds to look at tonight, the Food Service Fund. Obviously, activity significantly less year-over-year as the students were at home, but it did ultimately have a surplus and built financial health, about a 30% fund balance in that fund. So things are good in your Food Service Fund as you begin the new school year here in 2021. And then your Community Service Fund is the other fund that we look at. These are the programs like community education, ECFE, school readiness, and the like. And this fund got a little bit of help from the General Fund. The state authorized a transfer from your General Fund to help cover some of the losses of revenue related to fees for services and tuition that you usually get to help keep this fund balanced. And in the end, it ended the year with a $400,000 fund balance. Again, a very healthy place to be, and each of the components, whether it be community at ECFE, school readiness, and the like, you can see down below there, all had positive reserves at the end of the year, so all were in a good place again to start the 2021 school year. So I will leave my presentation at that. I'd be happy to stay for any questions you might have about the results of the audit or the district's financial position.
Anyone have any questions? Thank you so much. Excellent news.
Thank you.
And then I'm going to invite Barbie back up to talk about the bond sale and refunding.
Thank you. Board Chair Perito, Board members, and Superintendent Heil. Now, we will talk about the board refunding, and Shelby McQuay from Ellers will come and present the sale results that we had today regarding our refunding of bonds.
Madam Chair, members of the board, Dr. Heil, thanks for having me tonight. Today, we sold bonds for your refunding. And we sold those this morning, and you will, your action item tonight will be to award the sell bonds. So a refunding of bonds is just like a refinancing, but we're not going to take your five payments left and spread them over. You're not going to get savings that way. We're just going to do, refund them given current interest rates, which have dropped, and generate some savings, and that savings will go back to the taxpayers. So just an overall overview of the results. You went into the sale today with a credit enhancement rating of a AA2 that came from Moody's, as part of, being part of the state program. You also have an underlying rating of an A1. That was an upgrade from the last time we visited you, so congratulations on that upgrade from an A2. So over the, I think it was February, that Moody's had evaluated your finances and your current situation and decided that you needed to move into a higher category. So congratulations on that upgrade. Four bidders bid on your bonds today. The winning bidder was Piper Sandler out of Minneapolis. The low bid was about 4.46, so a little bit lower than we'd estimated at pre-sale. So in August, Brady had presented the pre-sale report, which we had prepared, and we'd estimated at that time that you would likely see an interest rate of about .95. So definitely came in lower than that. So good news overall. The summary of the results there, the principal borrowing amount is 4.475. That's lower than where we had estimated at the pre-sale because you received a higher premium than we were originally estimating. The premium is when the bondholders pay an amount higher than the face value of the bonds to purchase your bonds, and then that money will then go to offset the interest rates. So I'll kind of walk through the details of some of the, some of the results. The four bidders today were Piper Sandler, Baird, Northland, and Stiefel, and all of those did come under the pre-sale. So really, a great time to sell prior to the election. So your premium was a little bit higher, as I'd mentioned, and this went to offset the higher interest rates. So the coupon on the previous bonds was 3% overall, and on these bonds, the new bonds, the refunding bonds, was 5%. So that is a little counterintuitive, but taking into the premium, into account the premium and all the factors, the true interest cost was .45. So you went from a 3% on average to a .45. And that savings, overall, over the five years, generated 300, almost $340,000 to the taxpayers, and when you break that down to an annual levy, that's almost $70,000 to the taxpayers each year. That does not go to your general fund. That must go back to the taxpayers in the form of a reduction. You've set your levy so far, going into the truth and taxation process, so that lower levy amount will show up on their final statements. The back of the report for your information is just the Moody's assignment of the A1, and then the credit opinion showing the sort of longer analysis on where they, why they arrived at that A1. So overall, great results, and congratulations.
Thank you. Any questions?
Excellent. Thank you so much. Next, Susan Samaha, if she would like to join us for Get Ready and Family Engagement.
Board Chair Perito, Board members, Superintendent Heil, I'll be starting the presentation tonight, if that's okay with y'all. My name's Matt Kiefer, and I'm a part of the Get Ready program, and I'll be talking more about that tonight. And we're excited to be here. Thank you for allowing myself and another staff member for being here this evening. You got it? Okay. So like I said, my name is Matt Kiefer, and I'm the Get Ready Coordinator at the high school. Along with me tonight is Patrick Milton. He is the Get Ready Director. Lucia Mendez, my supervisor, cannot be here tonight, unfortunately, but I'm very, very happy to have Patrick here. And Patrick's going to talk a little bit more about the Get Ready program, and then I'll get into some of the details about what's going on at the middle school and the high school. So thank you.
Thank you, Matt. Madam Chair, Board, thank you so much for having me this evening. So I'm going to go back and forth. My glasses fog up quite often, so I apologize for that in advance. So thanks again for having me. I'm the Director for the Get Ready program out of the Minnesota Office of Higher Education. And the Get Ready program is essentially a pre-college program that's designed to support students during the course of their elementary and high school careers. So what we do is provide intensive supports to students to make sure that they're going to transition successfully across grade level, but more importantly, into the, into a program of higher education. It's been with the Office of Higher Ed for quite a number of years now. The program was actually instituted back in 1998, actually, it was signed by the Clinton administration. So it's been around for a little while, and it's really driven a huge number of outcomes for students across the country. There's usually a seven-year, six-year competition where districts across the country can apply, and if awarded, be able to provide some extensive programs to students across the school districts. The program is funded by the U.S. Department of Education, the Office of Post-Secondary Ed. These grants tend to be, that come out of the Office, can range anywhere from $4 million to as much as $25 million, and often sort of depends on the size of the school district. As I mentioned, the program in our case is administered by the Minnesota Office of Higher Education, so we work with about 17 schools across the district. We typically start in the middle school space, and we follow the young people over the course of their elementary and high school career. So again, it's really providing intensive support, and it's unique in the sense that it allows us to really follow our young people over the course of their, their school career. And then we also get to do usually a year of persistence work. The general goal here is, right, it's not just access, but it's also attainment and hopefully graduation from a program of higher education. And as I mentioned, again, we partner with a number of schools. Those schools we stick with, of course, doing the course of the grant. Usually, when we have to go back and reapply, we have to assess and evaluate whether or not we're going to continue to work with existing schools. Typically, I like to really bring on new schools to make sure we're spreading the wealth, so to speak, but that process is a little ways out, given that we're probably in year four, we're going, we're actually in year four of the seven-year grant, so we'll be able to make those decisions a few years down the road. So I'll stop there. Matt's going to go into a little bit more detail about the program, what it looks like here in the Fridley community. Thank you.
All right. So what does this partnership look like between Get Ready and Fridley Public Schools? This began in the 2018-2019 school year at the middle school, working with Six, Seven, Eight, and then now, actually, yeah, in year four of the seven-year grant. And I have been at Fridley High School for the past two years. This is my second year. And Get Ready staff member is housed at both the high school and at the middle school. The picture's up there. That is my space at the high school. I like to make it as colorful and loud as I can to grab students' attention, to get them in there, and start talking about what they want to do in their lives. So it's great to have that space at the high school. So what do we do? What is my job? What do we provide? So the Get Ready program, I'll go into each one of these in more detail here in a second, but we provide lessons and workshops, student advising, experiential learning opportunities, student and staff surveys, and school and staff support, and family and community engagement. So this is kind of our pillars of what we want to accomplish while we're here at Fridley Public Schools. So here are some lessons and workshops. First thing I want to talk about, and these are the types of presentations that are usually presented in an advisory course or at the College and Career Readiness Course at the middle school. This is either Get Ready curriculum made by our curriculum team or myself, and I kind of put it into three different categories here. And these, in these advisory classes and at the middle school, college, and career class, these are taught by Fridley staff. These are not taught by me. These are taught by Fridley staff. And the reasoning behind this is because college and career readiness is not just a one-person job. This is a school job. This is a district job to make sure that everyone is talking to these students, getting them involved, getting them thinking about what's next after high school. Because I always say, think about graduation day. You're going across that stage. You're going to shake principal hand's hand. We need to have a plan for right after that, and if we don't, we're in trouble. So my job is to get them prepared. And we do this by having these presentations along with other things. We have college and career knowledge. This is not just a four-year college route. This is not just going to the U of M, because everyone I talk to, that is exactly what they want. They want a four-year college. They want to go to the U of M, not because that's the greatest thing ever. Believe me, I'm a proud gopher. I roll the boat every chance I get. But I say, this is, this is something that students know about because it's the only thing they know about. It's the only route they know about. Four-year college, it's amazing. U of M, it's amazing. But it's not the only thing out there, and it's not the best position for these students. So they learn about this in college and career knowledge presentations. We also do soft skills and tech literacy training. This year, I've been working with Jessica Baker, who is the IB Coordinator at the high school, to create this pro tip series on how are we going to get through hybrid learning, how are we going to get through distance learning, and these things through soft skills and tech literacy, such as time management. How are we managing all of this in our lives? Because this is a hectic time for everyone. I've even had staff members at the high school talk to me about this. This is something that, like, it's not a high school problem. It's not a middle school problem. It's a problem in all our lives. And there's also tech tips. How do we email? That was a big thing. How do we email a teacher, right? You can't just have one word and like, "help," something like that. We've had staff who are getting these types of work. So we need to be able to teach our students about how to write all about this in a proper tech way. And then how do we assess this? I like to do this through fun and engaging content. I create a lot of games for students. This college and career game we did this past week at the high school. Last year, I did Who Wants to be a Millionaire, College and Career Edition, and they can come, if they get a question right, they can come to my office and get a college career-related prize. I get a lot of random, like, swag from colleges. They send it to me, so I hand that out, so students can wear T-shirts and have lanyards and things like that to create that college-going culture at the high school. Next slide. Student advising. This is my favorite part of the job. It's when I can sit down with a student and say, what do you want to do in your life? What is your dream job? And help out with that. It's a great picture right there. I'm really in the midst of getting that student to where she wants to go. She's on to great things. I think she's a gopher. I had nothing to do with that. So this is in-person and online this year, through emails and stuff like that. Students' favorite thing. So this is the experiential opportunities. It's also fun for me. This is a lot last year, when we could actually go out of school and go to these colleges, go to these career place visits. But last year, we went to the National College Fair, went to St. Cloud State, went to Augsburg, went to a couple of different, Dunwoody College of Technology. We had plans to go to a lot of different tech and community colleges later in the school year, but those got canceled because of COVID. Hopefully, next year, going into their senior years, they'll be going to those as well. We also have career speakers coming in to talk to our students. The bottom-left picture, that's Patrick Miller. He's, he owns his own construction company. He's a part of the CTE team here at Fridley, and he talks to students, he's a great speaker, about entrepreneurship, owning your own business, and trades. So he was, he was a great person to have come talk to students. We had lots of different people, especially from the Cummins Power System, come talk to our students as well. So they love to get out. They love to experience it. You don't know what kind of college campus you want until you're there, and you can feel that energy. You can feel what's going on. So that's just an example of that. At the middle school, so our Get Ready Coordinator at Fridley Middle is Noor Hussain, and she does an excellent job with the students down there. Some of the highlights from the middle school last year, she worked extensively with Alota Sims, who's the Equity Inclusion Specialist at the middle school, with the Black History Month showcase, and there's a couple of pictures right there about how they really celebrated that, and they did a really great job. She works extensively with the College and Career Readiness Course, putting, once again, putting in that Get Ready curriculum that focuses on what students want to do in their lives and just really explore at that point of time. On the bottom right, that's her field trip to Medtronic for the eighth graders, so they explore all the different types of careers that are offered at Medtronic and beyond. And then she also worked with a sixth and seventh grade Muslim girls group to talk about working, working through that, being a Muslim female, and everything that comes along with that, and learning more about their culture and identity through that. I also provide a lot of school and staff support at the high school. I work with the Student Support Services Team, so that's with the deans, that's with the school psychologist, the school social worker, admin, and we, we do a lot of different things, like the class meetings or ninth-grade orientation this year, for example. I'm a member of the CTE team, Career and Technical Education team. See a member of that, that team here today. I'm a part of the Post-Secondary Readiness Leadership Team, and that's, that's a group that gets together to talk about these post-secondary topics. That's me leading a professional development last year. Once again, I like to play games. So we got together, and we created like a staff jeopardy, and everyone got in their teams, and we got to ask a lot of questions, all about college and career. So this is increasing the knowledge of the, of the teachers, of all the different post-secondary pathways that are offered. Because I, I would imagine a lot of the teachers, because they went that four-year route, they know just that four-year route. So that was a way to really explore everything across the board. Staff is very competitive, and I think they really got into it. There's prizes and things like that. So hopefully, we have more of that going on down the line. And then, Get Ready Equity Manager Tobias Leitner, he's worked with the district as well. He's another Get Ready staff person. And he worked this summer a lot with some equity leaders here at Fridley High School, and they did a summer book study on the book called Stamped. It's a history of racism and anti-racism here in the United States, and how it really directly affects our pedagogy, our way of life, our instruction, and he did a great job with that. He'll be continuing our work with equity and inclusion with Suzanne Samaha, who will present here in a little bit, coming up. Holy cow, here we go. Student staff surveys. So we are a data-driven organization, so we want the stuff that we're doing to be informed through data. How do we do that? Through, through surveys. These are online surveys that students take. It's our cohort students. They go into our post-secondary aspirations and expectations, knowledge, and then connection to the school and to each other. We also give a survey to staff. This goes into staff post-secondary knowledge, expectations for students, and things like that. And this, all this data is put together by the Get Ready Evaluation Team, and then presented to school administration and the Post-Secondary Readiness Leadership Team to inform future decisions. And finally, family and community engagement. So we try to engage the community and as many family members and students as possible. For the community, Get Ready has purchased a Chrome Cart and Chromebooks for the middle school, especially last year. We purchased headphones for the community at the end of the spring and going into the summer last year, for those who had that need, because we're going back into distance learning. I've completed work with 12th grade families, completing their FAFSA. This is a huge undertaking, and it takes, takes, takes a lot of people to go and complete that, so I'm happily a resource for that. And then I'm also very proud of the collaboration between Get Ready and Fridley's Equity and Inclusion Team, especially the family nights that were put on last year. But to talk more about that, we have Suzanne Samaha here. So thank you.
Good evening, Board Chair Perdo, Perito, sorry, Board members, and Superintendent Heil. I've, I've been practicing all night, and I still got it wrong. This is so embarrassing. Thank you for this opportunity to share the amazing work that the team and Get Ready have been focusing in on for the foundation of the family engagement and family partnership at Fridley Public Schools. So to get started, I want to introduce myself. I'm Suzanne Samaha. I am the Equity and Inclusion Coordinator, and this is our fabulous team. We have Hope Oshifiye. She's at Stevenson. We have Yusuf Mahmoud, who's at Hayes Elementary. We have Alota Sims, who's at the middle school, Justin Reese, who's at the high school, and Song Yang, who's at the community center. None of this work would be possible without this amazing team. So next, we have a video for you to kind of introduce the collaboration from the Equity Inclusion Team with the Get Ready Committee.
My name is Suzanne Samaha. I am the Equity and Inclusion Coordinator.
Hi, Fridley families. My name is Matt Kiefer, and I'm the Get Ready Coordinator at Fridley High School.
Hello, my name is Noor Hussain, and I am the Get Ready Coordinator at Fridley Middle School.
Hi, Fridley families. I am Tobias Leitner. I am the racial equity manager at the Get Ready program at the Office of Higher Education in St. Paul, in partnership with Fridley Public Schools.
Hi, Fridley families. My name is Sheng Dalving. I am the Get Ready Parent Support Services Manager.
Hi, my name is Yusuf Mahmoud. I'm the Equity Inclusion Specialist at Hayes Elementary School.
Hi, Fridley families. My name is Alota Sims. I am the Equity and Inclusion Specialist at Fridley Middle School.
Hi, families. My name is Song Yang, and I'm the Equity and Inclusion Specialist at the Fridley Community Center.
Hi, Fridley families. My name is Hope Oshifiye, and I am an Equity and Inclusion Specialist based out of Stevenson Elementary School.
We are the Family Engagement Committee. Please reach out to us at any time, and we are excited to serve the Fridley Public School families.
Thank you, Matt, for helping with the editing of the video. Appreciate you. And so truly, when we get together as a collaboration, as a team, we're just full of energy, full of excitement, and we're so thrilled with ideas and how to reach every single family in our district. And so right now on the screen, you'll notice some of our accomplishments that took place last year. We had three family nights.
We had three family nights, Mung Family Night, Arabic Family Night, and Spanish Family Night. Unfortunately, we needed to postpone the Somali Oromo and the district-wide family nights due to the pandemic, so. There is a beautiful tradition here, and Matt talked a little bit about it, but Fridley Public Schools continues to honor African-American Parent Involvement Day. And so as a team, we were able to enhance the awareness of African-American Involvement Day. Parents and families come to school in elementary, they have breakfast or lunch, they can sit in the classroom with their students, students present different poetry or songs, and share different influential African-Americans that are in their life or in our history. So this is a very special day, and we were able to enhance this day across the district. In addition to all of the amazing work that our Communications Department does, we were able to collaborate by giving our families an opportunity to translate, and even an opportunity to reach out to us to understand the communication that's going out in English. And so this is something that we really celebrated, especially when we went to distance learning, that they had that opportunity to reach out to our team, Get Ready and Equity Inclusion Specialists together, to get that language support. And moving forward with our family engagement, we want to continue to hear from all our families, we want to continue to create opportunities for our families. We are going to have office hours, our Equity Inclusion Team, so that families know when to reach out to us, to ask questions in their home language. And then finally, we are going to be working closely with Superintendent Dr. Heil on creating a family engagement three-year plan. So that's what we hope to do moving forward. Finally, I want to leave you with a quote here. "There must be a profound recognition that parents are the first teachers, and that education begins before formal schooling, and is deeply rooted in the values, traditions, and norms of family and culture." Thank you. Oh, any questions?
I have some questions.
All for Matt.
As far as the, I'm curious how students become aware of you and how you connect with students. Do they, how they organically know to come to your office, or do you seek them out?
That was my question too, I have a senior, we both have juniors, we're coming knocking on your door.
You can, I'm there every day. So I think by the time this year, I think students are sick of seeing my face, I put it in anything I can, so any presentation, from ninth-grade orientation to the class meetings, I go around to the lunches every day, I'm in the hallways, as you can see, I'm very energetic and lively, or maybe you can't see that, but I like my job a lot. I'm very fortunate to be a Get Ready staff member and to be partnering with Fridley Public Schools. So if students don't know who I am, they'll find out soon enough.
I just have to say, I love your energy, Matt.
What is it, eight o'clock and I'm still bringing it?
Not only the students, but the staff.
I had a coffee at like 10:00 AM and I'm still riding that right now.
I feel like you bring that energy, it's like, yeah.
Well, to work with young people, you have to have it.
You do, you do, you give, I feel your energy, you're giving me energy.
You can't talk about your, yeah, you talk about your future, you can't be boring.
Do you feel like there has been a change in student enthusiasm as far as thinking about graduation? I know with my son, you know, he's like, ah, well, you know, we're not going to get homecoming, we're not going to get prom, and I try to talk to him about graduation, and he's so laser-focused on right now and the pandemic, that it's hard for him to think that there might be something after, and that it's going to end at some point. So how are you communicating with these kids and keeping them excited when it's a really hard time to be excited?
Sure. The way I kind of frame that conversation is that this builds grit, this is something that everyone's going to remember, and the stuff that you do today, and the practice and the attention to detail, and the perseverance that it takes to get through this, this is going to help you in college, this is going to help you in your personal life, this is going to help you in your career, and to really take that and value that. Because no one wants to be in this position, so we're making the best out of the situation that we have, and that's a life skill, that's a huge life skill, so that's what I'm telling students. Does it suck? Yes, it sucks. It sucks not to have homecoming, it sucks not to have like a huge graduation and things like that, I like to be real, but we have to make the best out of the situation.
Do you have any data on how many students you've served so far?
There might be a Patrick question. I try to reach like every student at least once or twice with something. They get all the information, once again, through their classes, but through me, it's really seeing them in the halls, going and talking to them at lunch, going from table to table to table, and if I see something, because I have a big spreadsheet with all of the students and their career interests and their college interests, it's almost complete. And then if I hear something like an opportunity or a college visit, stuff like that, I reach out to those students who have that interest, so we can make that really connected and detailed and reasonable when I talk to them. It's a big ask.
I have one more question.
Go for it.
So the College and Career Readiness and some of the classes that you talked about, is that an elective, or does everybody get that? So everybody is touched with that?
So the College and Career Readiness Course or Class, I was in a college mindset for courses and stuff like that, the class at the middle school, I believe, is an elective, but then things go out through the advisory in the middle school as well, but then at the high school, it's all advisories. So as you, like all the games and things like that, you can see, those go out to all students through advisory, and then this year, we're working on putting that out through Edgenuity as well.
Do you help with scholarships?
Of course. Yeah, this, a couple of years, or a couple of weeks ago, for College Knowledge Month, I gave all the seniors a packet with college application deadlines and information, a huge scholarship list that I've compiled, this is the, I think the fifth year of doing this work, so it's all the local scholarships, the Minnesota scholarships, and the national scholarships that I've seen students get in the past, so I know that they're attainable, I know that they're reachable, and actually real, that they're getting that money once they've completed the scholarship, and they've all received that. But once again, my cohort right now is nine, 10, and it kind of grows each and every year, but I support the 12th and 11th grade students as much as I can. If a student comes and talks to me, of course, I'm going to advise them. I worked with a parent and her, their son, and a couple of days ago, about the facet completion, will I receive credit based on the data and our reports on that? No. But through that culture, it's all about building that culture, so that hopefully that senior will then maybe tell its junior friends, junior friends tell sophomore friends, kind of trickle-down college knowledge.
So you mentioned that you assisted a parent as well, that was going to be my final question. I know Dylan probably can identify, every time I ask my son about college, I get grunts and moans and eye rolls, so my guess is your spreadsheet probably contains more information than I'm getting out of Dylan. So what does that collaboration look like if a parent calls you and says, I don't know how to support them, I don't know where they're interested, or is there ever a point where you reach out to the parent or guardian and say, here are some resources I think could be really helpful for this kid, oh, because I know mine doesn't talk to me, so I assume that most of us...
You handed a packet to seniors, my senior hasn't said a word, so I have a big mark right here, talk to Jacob, so, yeah.
Yeah, so it's a couple of different routes that happens. For me, it's if I'm meeting with a student, they bring up that their parents really don't know about FAFSA, or don't know about scholarships, or don't know about the college application process, because it's pretty extensive, then I could reach out to them or say, hey, this is my card, this is my information, call me whenever. Another way that we go about this is the deans at the high school, if they're in correspondence with families who might need that extra help, like for example, today, I had a student come to talk to me after the ACT and talk about the FAFSA and then the application to a couple of different nursing programs, and I said, hey, let's get your parent in here before school, after school, had a parent come in during lunch, yeah, it's, I would imagine when the cohort, I'm probably going way over time, the cohorts that I directly work with is 11th and 12th graders, it's going to be pretty crazy.
Thank you.
Yep. Any other questions?
Thank you.
I have a question for Suzanne. Because we're sick of you, alright? Your enthusiasm at eight o'clock is driving me nuts.
I love it.
I just want to thank you for your work on the CTE. I think oftentimes in high school, we take for granted the idea that your choices are either just going to the workforce on your own, or going to college. But obviously, if you're going to go in the workforce as an 18-year-old, you need some advice, you need some direction, and I know the CTE brings that to our kids in Fridley, so thank you for that, and thank you for your passion for not just the college readiness, but the career readiness as well, because it's a, I don't know the exact numbers, but I'm guessing a minority of kids in Fridley actually go to a four-year college. So thank you for that, I appreciate it, that means a lot to me, so thank you for all your work, and your disgusting enthusiasm.
You'll be sick of me. Alright, thank you.
Do you have a question?
I have a question about the family engagement for Suzanne. Yeah, so I do appreciate the recognition of parents as key partners in our work as a district, and so the inclusion and the model of different, you know, language speakers and, you know, people of different backgrounds coming together and walking through that, so how is that reflecting with our families' engagement? And I know that also at different levels, like some are very comfortable working with the school system, so how we addressing some of the barriers that some of our, let's say, our new immigrants or people who don't speak English that well yet, you know, so how are we going through those challenges?
Yep, so that's a great question. We are at the foundation of meeting with families right now, so like I said, this was the first time, for example, all the Arabic families came together, and they were able to share how the experience of Fridley is for their students, and many of them were, are brand-new to our school district, and even brand-new to our country. And so learning our school system is one of the first things that we should probably continue to be in relationship with them, and so that requires a lot of one-on-one conversations. Similarly to the Mung group, when they came in, it was, it was an amazing experience to hear that the Mung community has been in Fridley for many years, and this was the first time they came together, and they were able to share their experiences. And so we want to continue to build spaces for our families to come in and share their experience, and then in partnership, continue to collaborate on what the change is, and how do we strengthen and enhance our Fridley community. So I think once the pandemic is kind of over, we'll have more opportunities to engage, because we still have to meet with Somali families, we still have to meet with Oromo families, and then everyone else. So it's a lot of work, and we're very excited, I mean, you saw the video of all our team, and hopefully with that, we can gather more information. Sounds good? Thank you.
Thank you.
And then Mr. Adam, we also took the information from each of their meetings, so I do have results from that that eventually we'll share with the school board as well, so input from those groups, we were just trying to get to the rest of the groups, and then the pandemic happened, so.
Good work, thank you.
Thank you so much. I would invite Ms. McLemore to come talk about the levy renewal and show us a presentation.
I'm supposed to have a partner. Thank you Board Chair Perdoo, School Board Members, and Superintendent Dr. Heil, this never fails, we always follow a tough act, and if I can just share a story about Matt, you know, we work in a high school, but we don't interact with students the way our teachers do, but he's always looking for opportunities. So this year, he reached out to us and said, I have this amazing ninth grader who is really interested in writing and being a journalist, and what do you know? He works in a school district that has the best communications team ever. So he brought this student, we had a really good meeting, talked about all the facets of communications, and now we have a student intern who is working in the communications office, and is really going to help us write some stories with our student voice, we are really excited about that, so, good job.
Matt, I think you can ask for a raise this evening, so.
Yep. Approved it. So today, Board Members, we are here to present informational video for our referendum. The Board approved to place a capital levy project renewal on the ballot this November, and unfortunately, this year, in the middle of a pandemic, we are not able to engage with our community the way we would love to, to be able to share information with them. So we have produced informational materials that we have mailed to our community, we have created a website with additional information that community members can log into and access, and we have this video that we have created because we know pictures speak a thousand words, and it's important for our community to be informed, so they can make informed decisions when they go to the ballot on November 3rd. This levy is just a renewal, it's not a new tax, and it was first approved in 2002, it was last renewed in 2011, and we are going to be asking our community to consider renewing it again. The capital levy projects support our maintenance projects throughout the school district and all our buildings. As many of you know, our buildings average about 60 years of age, so we do have aging buildings, we have taken very good care of them, and that still requires funding. It also supports our technology. This year, more than anything else, we all understand the value of making sure that students and staff have access to technology, being able to give our students each their devices allows them to access learning anywhere, anytime, away from the classrooms and when they are at home. So this is an ask to our community, and many of them have already started engaging in early voting, and the ballot itself does outline what the school district is going to use this funding for.
So the funding that we're asking for, as Jael said, it is a renewal, so this will allow us to continue to have about a million dollars each year to be able to spend on capital projects, and as Jael said, what we're intending to spend the dollars on is technology, as well as long-term facility maintenance and just the upkeep. So what the taxpayers, what the voters will see on the ballot is that we're asking to extend an existing renewal, and this is not a per pupil, so it's good that, it's somewhat difficult to understand how much that means, but what they will see on the ballot is 5.47% of their net tax capacity, and so that's what they originally approved back in 2002, 2011, and that's what we're asking for again. Some important things for them to note is that we are asking, it's going to be about a million dollars per year, it's a 10-year maximum, so roughly $10 million, to be spent towards those capital project pieces. This does not affect their taxes until tax year 2022, so we actually have a year delay before it comes into play. Because it is a renewal, the taxes are very minimal, as an example, on a $200,000 home, the tax impact would be $3 annually. So it, that's very typical of a renewal, that, you know, it's, you know, pretty much even neutral. So just thinking that it's important for everyone to realize what we're using those dollars for, we're not increasing programs, we're not asking for anything new, we're asking to keep what we currently have in place.
On November 3rd, 2020, Fridley Public Schools will ask voters to approve the renewal of an existing capital projects levy. Capital projects levies support the education of students by providing funds for instructional technology and to address deferred maintenance projects to ensure students have the best learning environment. The current capital projects levy has been in place since 2002 and was last renewed in 2011. Eighty-nine percent of district residents believe our schools are a good investment in the future of our children. The average age of our buildings is 60 years old. The buildings must continue to be maintained and modernized to provide a safe environment for learning. Technology must also be updated within shorter periods of time to keep up with innovation and advancement. To provide our students with the tools they need to succeed, we must upgrade devices and infrastructure to support student achievement. These maintenance and technology projects will enable the district to continue moving forward in reaching its core educational mission of preparing students for college The funds from the capital projects levy will allow the district to replace the community center's windows, replace worn flooring in the elementary schools, renovate locker rooms to accommodate current needs, add and renovate restrooms at the elementary schools, re-roof portions of the high school, middle school, and community center, replace rooftop heating, ventilation, and air conditioning units, repair exterior brick walls.
The average age of Fridley school buildings is 60 years. When you think of your own home, roofs in Minnesota have an average life of 15 to 20 years. Windows need to be replaced every 20 to 30 years, and brick exteriors hold up well, but they need ongoing maintenance to keep the mortar filled and sealed. filled and sealed, as well as replacing cracked or broken bricks. Taking care of our buildings now prevents bigger issues in the future.
The need for up-to-date inefficient technology has never been greater than today, when many students are choosing distance learning. To adequately prepare our students for college and careers, the district must be prepared to offer learning opportunities to students that meet their needs and support their future goals. Equitable access to technology and learning devices allow our students to be competitive with their peers and to personalize how they learn. Without funding from a capital projects levy, our district would not have adequate funding to continue to upgrade technology infrastructure district-wide to support increased demand for access and provide up-to-date devices to students and staff for learning at school and online.
The funds the levy has raised over the past 10 years have been used to provide students, teachers, and staff with the technology needed for 21st century teaching and learning, including devices. These devices need to be replaced every three to four years to remain current and operate efficiently. In addition, the district must maintain an efficient technology infrastructure capable of handling increasing demand. The renewal would enable us to replace outdated devices with updated technology that allows for a collaborative teaching and engaging learning experience, as well as giving our students the tools they need to reach their full potential.
Having up-to-date technology systems is important for a number of reasons. Students who do not have access to technology are disadvantaged because they're locked into only one way of learning. Technology provides for rigorous learning to take place remotely while supporting the diverse personalized learning styles of students. Technology provides access to current education and instructional resources and literally brings the world to our Fridley students. Without technology, our students don't have access to what is expected of them in the real world, both college and career-wise.
This levy was first authorized in 2002 and was last renewed in 2011. The district is asking its residents to consider renewing this existing levy, which is set to expire in 2021. This is not a new levy. If the capital projects levy renewal passes, the district will use the funds to continue to address maintenance projects across the district and to maintain adequate and modern technology that can efficiently support student and staff needs. If the capital projects levy renewal does not pass, the district will not be able to address priority maintenance issues in our aging buildings and would not be able to modernize our classrooms to meet the needs of our young learners. The district would also be unable to provide current technological resources necessary to keep our students competitive with their peers across the state. Every vote counts. Whether by mail or in person, please remember to vote by or on November 3rd.
Thank you so much. Does anyone have any questions? Okay. We will move on to our business action items. First, we are going to, I'm going to ask for approval of the 2019-2020 audit report. Somebody want to make a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Stark, seconded by Thornton. Any questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
And that motion passes. Next, we have the resolution awarding the sale determining the form and details, authorizing the execution, delivery, and registration, and providing for the payment of general obligation School Building Refunding Bonds Series 2020A. So, I would like to ask if somebody would make a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Carnop, seconded by Stark, and that is to award the sale determining the form and details, authorizing the execution, delivery, and resignation, I'm sorry, registration, and providing for payment of general obligation for the bonds. And since that is a resolution, I'm going to call the roll. Adam?
Aye.
Carna?
Aye.
Prowito?
Aye.
Stark?
Aye.
Thornton?
Aye.
And Jeong?
Aye.
And with that, all in favor? And the resolution passes. Next, we will move on to resolution for accepting gifts. Whereas the School Board Policy 706 establishes guidelines for the acceptance of gifts to the district, and whereas Minnesota Statute 465.03 states, "The school board may accept a gift, grant, or device of real or personal property only by the adoption of a resolution approved by two-thirds of its members. Therefore, be it resolved that the School Board of Fridley Public Schools accepts with appreciation the following gifts received by the school district. The following persons donated to Fridley Public Schools: Fridley Columbia Heights Rotary Dictionaries to all 3rd grade students; the following persons donated to Fridley High School: Supplies from their Amazon wishlist; Jody and Keith Hill; Katie Koski; Joanna Kruger; and Rose Nordean; the following persons donated to Fridley Middle School: 75 face masks; Cindy Hohn; the following persons donated to Stevenson Elementary School: 48 kits for kids; Queen Esther, Chapter Number 16." And if somebody would like to make a motion to accept those gifts and thank the donors?
Motion to accept?
Second.
Motion by Carnop and seconded by Thornton to accept gifts and thank the donors for their contributions. I will again call the roll. Adam?
Aye.
Carna?
Aye.
Prowito?
Aye.
Stark?
Aye.
Thornton?
Aye.
And Ms. Jeong?
Aye.
And all those in favor? Motion, and the resolution passes. And next, we will move on to a motion to, for the second reading and adoption of policies. Dr. Heil?
Thank you. Chair Prowito and school board members, I would like to present a second reading of Policy 104, the District 14 Mission Statement. There has been no changes since the first reading, and I am asking the board's approval for this policy this evening.
Thank you. And also, Policy 105, Mr. Keeler?
Board Chair Prowito, board members, and Superintendent Dr. Heil, I'm coming before you to present Equity Inclusion Policy 105. Only change since the first reading was a grammatical change on page two. Other than that, there are no further changes.
Wonderful. Thank you. And would somebody like to make a motion to approve the second reading and adoption of policies?
So moved.
Second.
A motion by Thornton and seconded by Carnop to approve the second readings and adoptions of Policies 104 and 105. Next, we'll move on to the consent agenda. This is to approve the agenda of routine action items, including minutes of the regular school board meetings, work session held on September 15th, 2020, and the work session held on October 6th, monthly financial reports, new contracts, amendments, lane changes, leaves of absence, terminations, resignations, retirements, memorandums of agreement with absence, I'm sorry, memorandum of agreements with the School District 14 and Fridley Education Association regarding building subs and statewide health improvement program agreement. Is there a motion?
Motion moved.
Second.
Motion by Adam, seconded by Jeong. All those in favor?
Aye.
And that motion passes. Next, we're going to move on to written information, student enrollment.
Thank you, Chair Prowito. I'd like to share student enrollment as of October 1st, where we're looking at approximately about 2,900 students. We have a slight decrease in elementary, generally around our kindergarten, first-grade area, which we're seeing in several other school districts as well due to the pandemic. And we are also seeing an increase in the middle school and high school students. Thank you.
Thank you. And the first reading of policies, Mr. Isaacson?
Good evening, Board Chair Prowito, board members, Superintendent Dr. Heil. I acknowledge that after the enthusiasm of Matt and the elegance and grace of my colleagues, that a first reading is probably diminished comparatively, it's fairly perfunctory and pragmatic. But I do present to you the first reading of change to Policy 402. The change is evident in Section D, and that changes the title of the district-appointed ADA coordinator from Laura Seifert-Hurtling to S. Ike Isaacson. That is the only change.
Thank you.
Thank you.
You had a good job, Mr. Isaacson. Good, Isaacson.
Matt will have to come back every time, so enthusiasm. We're going to move on to reports from school board members. Carol, would you like to talk about your equity in education?
Sure, Matt, give me some of that energy right now to get me home. Okay, so, from that meeting, we, Justice Allen Page and the Minneapolis Federal Reserve President Neil Koshkari discussed a proposed constitutional amendment, and in that amendment, it states all children have a fundamental right to equality public education. It is the duty of the state to ensure quality public schools fulfill this fundamental right. They believe that there is a huge achievement gap, and they feel like it would give families more control and have their voice put back into it, along with staff and administration. So, they were hoping to have that on the ballot for this year, but of course, with the COVID, and I don't have to tell anyone, with everything going on, so hopefully next year, we'll be seeing that and more discussion about that. Next, we had Peter Leatherman, of course, he's a leading analyst from the Morris Leatherman Company, who presented this year's public opinion and political trends here in Minnesota. Some of what he said was 60% of the Minnesotans believe that we're going in the right direction, and 36% thinks that we're on the wrong track right now. Household finances this year, 29% say they're better off, whereas 23% think that they're worse off, and 47% about the same. 33% are very concerned about COVID-19, whereas 31% are not too much or not at all, and 35% are somewhat concerned. So, the three most important state issues are, number one is reducing crime, the second is improving economy and jobs, and the third is reducing healthcare costs. Followed by, number four is addressing, of course, racial injustices that we've been seeing and hearing, and of course, number five, improving K-12 education. So, we still want to discuss adequate versus quality education and moving that discussion forward, so, thank you.
Wonderful. Thank you. And Dr. Heil?
AMSD? Yes. Hi, attended the AMSD Board of Directors meeting on October 2nd. We had a presentation from Dr. Tom Melcher, who's retired finance officer from Minnesota Department of Education. He shared work from the Governor's Requested Finance Working Group. And this group, which entails several subgroups, looked into pressure points in school finance. So, some of the areas that were reviewed were funding around EL, special education, transportation, and closing the student achievement gap, QComp, Safe Schools Levy, review of how basic revenue is allocated to school districts and early learning. So, great recommendations were made and will be presented in the future to the Governor. Thank you.
Thank you. And Ms. Stark? 916?
At the most recent 916 meeting, we discussed the three learning models, which are enhanced distance, hybrid, and in-person, along with the circumstances required to engage in each of these models for the students. We also discussed the criteria and frameworks around each model, and finished with a presentation on the most up-to-date report on COVID-positive cases. We went through and approved some more board policies, mostly around COVID face coverings, what was required by students and staff, and then ended on discussing next steps in the superintendent search, since the current superintendent is retiring. Thank you.
Thank you. Our future important school board dates, we have a meeting, 916's board meeting will be November 4th, the next AMSD board meeting, November 6th, Schools for Equity in Education will be held on November 13th, the next Fridley Public School Board meeting, November 17th, Northwest Suburban Integration School District meeting will be on November 18th, and Truth in Taxation will be December 15th. And that is all I have. If nobody else has anything, we can close. If somebody would like to make a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Stark, seconded by Thornton, all in favor?
Aye.
And the meeting is closed at 8:37. Thank you.